I'd like to call this Crystal Council meeting to order. Let's start with roll call, please.
Councilmember Eitbo.
Here.
Councilmember Kamish.
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
Councilmember Unessa Rosen.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Here.
Councilmember Cummings.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We have an agenda before us. Looking for a motion on that agenda. Go ahead, John.
I move approval of the agenda.
All right, looking for a second. Therese?
I will second that.
All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. First on the agenda is an appearance. I'm going to have Deputy Chief Brian Hubbard start, and he will introduce our guests. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not on the agenda. I'm the shorter, less competent version. But the chief is not with us tonight. She's joining us online. Thanks for the opportunity to share with you and the community a little bit tonight. As many may know or might have noticed, around our building here, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We have, as a police department and as a city, for a number of years, tried to recognize that silent epidemic that happens in all of our communities by recognizing that. Few statistics that I would share for you. Domestic violence affects 1 in 4 Minnesota women and accounts for 1/4 of all violent crime in Minnesota. Women age 18 to 34 have the highest risk of victimization from domestic violence. Domestic violence is the leading cause of injury to women, exceeding injuries caused by muggings, stranger rape, and automobile accidents combined. Last year in Minnesota, nearly 70,000 victims received services from domestic violence agencies, which is a staggering number, but more staggering if you include the fact that we believe that it's estimated as many as 80% of domestic assaults go unreported. About 1 in 5 high school girls has been physically or sexually abused by a dating partner. And nearly 1/3 of homeless women in Minnesota are homeless, at least in part, because of domestic abuse. And obviously, we are not immune to it in this community. One of the things in both communities that I've worked in that continues to be mind-boggling to me is that you drive around our neighborhoods, you drive around in more affluent neighborhoods in the community that I previously worked in, and you look at houses that on the outside seem all put together. And unfortunately, my partners and I have the opportunity to walk into a house that is far from put together in situations like this. And so I think it's important for us to recognize this and our role in making sure that we are trying to help with the solution to getting people out of these situations. With that said, for anybody that may be listening, I would urge, I would almost beg if I could, that if you or someone you know is in a situation that is unsafe, that you make sure that you reach out for some assistance. There's some assistance there. And you look at the cycles of domestic violence, and boy, there's lots of factors. It's not just as easy as get out. That's just not how it works in people's lifestyles. And so, part of our recognition is saying, and we want to come alongside families, we want to come alongside victims, and make sure that we are not just saying, "Get out, that's so easy," but really trying to make sure that we are doing our diligence in helping them facilitate that happening. And so, I would ask us to stop and pause for a moment of silence to recognize those victims of this heinous crime. Thank you. With that, as you all know, we have been at the fronting edge for a number of years in saying we actually are going to put our money and our effort where our mouth is in this. And we're one of the first organizations to really partner deeply with domestic violence and domestic advocacy services. As you know, we made a transition last year and are working with a different organization. And so, we thought this is a perfect opportunity for you to hear a little bit more about our new partner, who we've been working with since the beginning of the year, who's been a fantastic partner. And so, I'm going to invite Jennifer Dickinson up. She's with the organization Tubman, who is our domestic violence and advocacy partner. She's the Director of Legal Services there. And Jen's going to tell you a little bit about what our partnership involves, what that looks like here in Crystal, and part of what attracted us to Tubman, which she'll share with you, is really the broad array of services that Tubman offers that this partnership allows us to really easily tap into. So with that, Jennifer, I'll give you the podium.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, Council. Mayor Adams, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and share a little bit about our new partnership with Crystal and just overall more about our services and how we work with victims of relationship violence and families, really, in trying to address domestic violence. Just a little bit about me. I'm new to this director role at Tubman, but I have been with Tubman for about 25 years, mainly in the advocacy world, doing a lot of direct service. That's really where my heart is. So I really appreciate the partnership that we formed here and how really invested the city is. It's really nice to see that the city cares so much and really wants to see these services provided to their citizens at the highest level. And it's just something I've really appreciated in working with the police department, working with city prosecutors. It's really been a good partnership thus far. So with that, in terms of how we work with victims, the way that it's set up is that we have a specific intervention line, a specific number for law enforcement to call and report a domestic-related incident. So that's typically how we make that first interaction and are notified about an incident that happens in Crystal. The officer will call that number, pass on all the relevant information, such as the party's demographics, names, database, phone numbers, as well as the police report number, and a little bit of information about what happened in that incident. Then in turn, the person taking that call, the advocate at our shelter location, will then follow up with the victim at that time and kind of do some immediate safety planning to talk about, are they okay in that moment? The other party may or may not have been arrested at that time. If they weren't arrested, talking about whether they have a safe place to go that night. We also have a shelter in Maplewood, and that is available if someone needs a safe place to go. Then we let them know a little bit about our services and the fact that somebody from our legal program will be in touch with them the next day to talk more about next steps and what that process looks like. At that point, the shelter advocate will pass on that information to our legal program. And there are specific advocates that are assigned to the city of Crystal. And we really have a great team of Hennepin County advocates, a lot of experience, a lot of dedication, really passionate about this work. And so, at that time, when they get that information, they'll follow up with the victim and explain what the next steps will be. If that person, if the defendant is on for court, for example, we will go to court, pass on information from the victim to the prosecutor, prepare domestic abuse no contact orders for the court, explain what that process is. Also, explain to the victim that they have rights in this process. They have a right to be involved. They have a right to give input. They have a right to be notified of plea agreements. They have a right to be present at proceedings. And so, making sure to let them know what those rights are. And then we follow those cases all the way through the court process. So if a victim survivor ever has to come to court, we help facilitate that, make sure that they get there safely, arrange for them to speak with a prosecutor, if they'd like to do that, as well as do a lot of safety planning. You know, as these cases go through, there's a lot of stuff going on in the background. Typically, a lot of stuff with kids, trying to figure out finances, a lot of safety pieces going to work, all of that. And that changes over time. One safety plan that you start off with at the beginning might look very different by the end of the time working with that client. And then, we also provide civil advocacy in terms of writing orders for protection if a client is interested in that. We will help draft that paperwork. We have staff attorneys that are able to e-file that paperwork so that the client doesn't have to go down to the courthouse and do it themselves. Like everybody in the world, we had to figure out how to do things a little differently during COVID. And that was one of the pieces that ended up being a positive, if there's such a thing, through COVID. But we started doing orders for protection remotely in all the counties we serve, and e-filing orders. And that has just been a tremendous benefit, I think, to the clients because, again, they're not having to go downtown, whether it be Minneapolis or St. Paul or Stillwater, and file that paperwork, figure it out, you know, take time off work, find childcare for their kids, find parking, all of those pieces. They're able to do it from the comfort of their home, to talk through it with the advocate over the phone or over Zoom, and know that that will be followed up on. As part of that process, we also have another program called the Safety Project, which is a group of attorneys that have volunteered to take our order for protection cases for free. So we have a pool of about 200 attorneys. Really, about 100 of them are active at this time. And what happens is, a lot of times in these order for protection cases, there's a lot of pieces that can be addressed through an order for protection, such as temporary child custody, child support, firearms provision, asking for firearms to be removed, all very important pieces and necessary for clients to be able to have the support they need to live, to take care of their kids, all of those pieces. And so, back when I started doing this work, nobody ever had an attorney. It was, you came in, you told your story, the judge would make a decision. But because of all of these pieces, the other party is typically represented. And you almost feel that your client's at a disadvantage if they don't have an attorney helping them. So that program has been really beneficial to the clients that we serve. We also have another legal program that provides representation on family law cases, so like divorces, custody, those kinds of things. But those cases are a little bit harder to place because they take a long time. You know, divorces can last, you know, a few years in the system before they're resolved. So that's kind of a broad, very broad overview of our legal program. But what's really nice is when we start working with a client, we really focus on what is it that the client wants. So it's really client-directed in terms of what do you need for your family? What is it that, how can we help you? So that may look different for, you know, one family to another. We are able to offer other services within Tubman that is also helpful for the family. So for example, I mentioned our shelter program. We have a shelter located in Maplewood. That's a 90-bed facility. We have a clinical and mental health program and support groups. We also have a lot of youth services. We have groups that go out into schools to do violence prevention and talking about healthy relationships with teens and red flags and those kinds of things. We have, what else do we have? We also have something called Safe Journeys, which is a program, part of our shelter, but it's in a different area of our shelter for youth from 16 to 24 that have experienced relationship trauma or sex trafficking. So once we're working with a client, we are able to offer those broader continuum of services as well. And in terms of working with Crystal, some of the other things that we've been doing is spending more time at the police department. So as I mentioned, we have a core group of advocates that cover the cases in Crystal. And it's really nice to be able to build that relationship with the clients we serve. As you know, domestic violence typically isn't a one-time thing. As Brian mentioned, it's a cycle of violence. And oftentimes, there's more than one case that happens over the course of working with a client. So it's really about developing that trust, developing that rapport, so that client feels like we're here for them, that no matter what they decide right now, because it is their choice whether they want to leave that relationship or not. And most clients, I would say by far, that we work with don't necessarily want the relationship to end, but they want the violence to stop. And so, trying to make sure that it's safe for them, and if things go south at some point, that they know they can always reach out and we'd be happy to help. So developing that trust and that relationship is really core to that piece. We do spend a lot of time, well, probably not a lot of time, at the police department, but we try to stop in, do some office hours on a regular basis, and develop those relationships with officers, answer questions. The officers have been really great about sending over reports or sending over information specific to a case, you know. We went out on this call, but I just want to give you a little more background information that maybe wasn't in the report that I think you would find helpful. All of those pieces are really great in terms of working together and helping us to do a better job overall. So with that, do you have any questions, any particular questions about what we do or how we work with clients?
Any questions? Go ahead, John.
So on average, I mean, you talked about advocacy. What's about the average length that you're involved with the individual in getting them out of a, you know, a domestic violence relationship?
I would say, well, that's a good question. And the short answer is, as long as they want us to be involved.
Right.
Sometimes, we're working with clients well beyond past the court case, after the court case is finished, if there's other things going on, maybe with a divorce, or maybe with other housing issues, or finances, or things like that. The court cases themselves, we've noticed, are taking a lot longer with COVID. You know, everything came to a grinding halt. So there's some cases that have been in the system for a year, year and a half, that still haven't been resolved. I would say typically, right around six months or so is the length of a court case from start to finish. But we'll continue to work with that client for as long as they need services.
Wow.
Go ahead.
One last. And then, like, so is most of the services on a bono-type basis? Or is there some funding involved? Are you receiving any funding for your program?
So we receive some funding. The only, all of our services are free, with the exception of our clinical and mental health services. Those are insurance-based. But I would say most of the insurance that we receive is through Medicare and Medicaid.
Okay.
Otherwise, the rest of our services are free. We do receive funding from the Office of Justice Programs, which is a federal program. It comes through federal dollars and passes through the state. What has been really difficult about that piece is that that funding has remained flat for the last six years. And we just found out in the last few months that that funding will continue to remain flat for the next two years.
Wow.
And as you probably know, like, everybody is noticing how costs continue to go up. We're also experiencing that. We've put some investment into our staff, which has been really important in terms of keeping good people. We've noticed in a lot of other advocacy programs that, you know, there's been a lot of turnover within three to six months because it's a difficult job. It really, it's a lot. And so, we've been really fortunate in terms of having great staff and, you know, trying to shore that up and keep them with us. For example, the Hennepin County Legal Advocacy Manager has been with Tubman for 16 years. So all of that wisdom, all of that historical knowledge, all of that competence in terms of how the court system works and working with clients and advocacy overall is just invaluable.
Anything else? All right. Jennifer, thank you for coming and sharing with us. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for what you do.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We'll handle those in one motion. It's approval of the minutes from the council work session on September 14th, the council meeting on September 19th, and the work session on that same date. Approval of the list of license applications submitted by the city clerk to the city council that is on file in her office. Adoption of a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with the Minnesota Department of Public Safety for the 2024 Multicultural Adult Driver Education Project. And that is our list. Looking for a motion on this one. Go ahead, Forrest.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
All right. Second. John?
I second that motion.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I abstain. Motion carries. Open forum. Do we have anything? Nobody?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone here wishing to speak during open forum? Seeing no one approach, we'll skip by open forum. First item on our regular agenda is the $25,000 disbursements. First one is the League of Minnesota Cities, the Workers' Compensation Insurance for $155,133.00. Met Council for Wastewater Services for October is $138,936.19. Northdale Construction Company for the 2023 Utility Reconstruction for $992,091. West Metro Fire Rescue District for September Contributions is $123,281. Ziegler Inc. for new replacement for the tractor backhoe is $212,656. IRS Electronic Payments for Federal FICA withholding taxes for pay date 9/15/2023 is $66,451. In pair for employee and city required contributions for same pay date is $68,284. Total disbursements greater than $25,000 is $1,056,834.54. Any questions on any one of these items? Seeing no questions, looking for a motion. Tracy?
I will move to approve the list of disbursements over $25,000.
Thank you. Second, Therese?
I will second it.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Next item on the agenda is to receive a presentation on the 2024 budget and also have an opportunity for the public to provide input. We have our Assistant Financial Director, Jody, here to address the council. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am Jody Bershheim, as you mentioned, the contracted Assistant Finance Director for the City of Crystal. And tonight, we are seeking public input for the 2024 Proposed General Fund Budget and Tax Levis, as well as the EDA Proposed Budget and Tax Levy. There we go. Tonight is just a, it's an overview of what I presented back on September 5th to council. The agenda lists what I will recap in this presentation. To start, it's important to look at what sets the framework that guides the budget process. These budget goals include being able to meet the service demands of the community and also meet the demands of the legislative mandates while still meeting councils' four priorities. Those priorities will be covered in the next slide. It's important to staff and council to continue providing sound financial planning. The goals also provide a continual effort to keep investing in capital needs for the community, including parks and street improvements. Staff was also mindful about monitoring economic challenges throughout the process. And the city remained committed to being thoughtful about retaining quality staff by providing competitive wages and benefits. As mentioned earlier, the four priorities of council are listed here. To provide a thriving business climate, creating strong neighborhoods, developing sound financial policies and communicating those through financial information provided to the community, and building a welcoming and inclusive community. Here's a snapshot of the remaining timeline for the budget. Tonight is an opportunity for public input, and another opportunity for input will be given on December 5th. Council will consider the final budget and the property tax levy at that time. This list provides some of the significant changes that impacted the 2024 budget and corresponding levy. I won't read them all, but they do include staffing increases for a couple positions in both police and utilities. It's important to note that the utility staff increase is not funded by the general fund. Therefore, it does not have a levy impact. It is funded by the utility funds. Also included are increased costs due to the three elections, a continued investment in capital funding, additional funding received for local government aid and one-time police aid, additional investment towards increased fund balance reserves, cost of living wage adjustments, which wages and benefits, as you know, are a significant portion of the budget, and as well as overall inflationary increases. This slide provides a summary for the general fund. The overall budget is expected to increase 13% in 2024. This slide provides a visual breakdown of the expenditure budget, mostly by department. It does include a small portion for the transfers out for fund balance reserves investment that's listed as its own category on this slide. You can see that public safety is the largest expenditure area within the budget. The 13% budget increase equates to an increase of $2.4 million. And this slide provides a breakdown of the budget categories. And you can see that property taxes and intergovernmental revenues, which is primarily state aid, are the largest funding sources for those expenditures. We'll talk more about the levy in an upcoming slide. As for the EDA, expenditures are proposed at $401,000 with a proposed levy increase of 6% to maintain consistent fund balance from prior year. Overall, the total levy is projected to increase by 10%, which is less than the original 2024 proposed levy of slightly over 13%. One item to note is the Police Equipment Revolving Fund levy was decreased from the original proposed as there are healthy reserves in that fund to meet planned expenditures with the one-time state aid being received. This was an area that could contribute toward reducing the overall levy. As for the tax impacts to the taxpayer, on the top part of the slide, you'll see the levy increases we just talked about. It also shows an increase in the net tax capacity, which is good news for the city as it helps offset the increases in the tax rate. The tax rate is estimated to go from 46.43% to 48.28%. On the bottom part of this slide, you can see the estimated annual increases for the various home values with the trends in the market value increases that are being experienced. It's important to note that specific homes may experience a larger or smaller decrease in these tax or increase, that these tax impact figures are still very preliminary and will continue to change over the next few months as the county refines their figures. This slide lists the revised budget objectives after some of the budget session discussions that we had. It's reducing the levy increase from the original proposed increase. It's investing in the long-term capital funds, and it does increase the fund balance reserves. This slide provides a visual for the fund balance reserve benchmarks. It's important to note to maintain healthy reserves as local governments rely heavily on the property tax revenue and need to have sufficient cash flow between tax collection cycles to be able to maintain the operations. It's not uncommon for government to utilize reserves in a given year for funding larger expenditures than expected, but it is important to continually monitor those reserves and build them back up over time. The 2024 revised budget does just that. It reflects the planned increase of $488,000 to build those reserves up to be able to strive to meet the benchmarks of the Office of the State Auditor and the city's own policy. To wrap up the presentation, I did want to remind taxpayers that there are state relief programs available, and that program information is available on the Minnesota Department of Revenue. and that program information is available on the Minnesota Department of Revenue website. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor and council for public input.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Any comments? No comments.
Got a question.
Yeah.
Go back to the pie-shaped chart. What percent, I'm just curious, what percentage of the budget is the parks and markets? Is it about 12%?
I'm not sure whether it's not showing up. Let me look here real quick. Does it show up there? It's 12%.
Okay, that's, that's why that.
It must have just got kind of squished there and didn't, but yeah, it's 12%.
Thank you.
All right. Forrest?
I mean, I'm not going to say the same things that I've said before besides one thing, and that is, I do think that as we go forward after this budget, looking at some of the budget policies we have, I think it makes a lot of sense for us to start looking at a more effective way of trying to make sure that we stay in line with our unassigned fund balance requirements, at least at that state auditor mark, whether that is for every, because essentially as the budget increases, that gap increases. So I think we need to have some sort of mechanism where it's, we're not making a budget that's increasing unless we're also increasing that unassigned fund balance. And, and I think that obviously our current policy isn't effective in doing that.
Can you tell me how much again was the amount that's going to that this year?
To the fund balance?
Yes, please.
$488,000.
Okay. I, I guess the thing that occurred to me when you were doing the presentation is that over time fixing this is probably how it's going to have to be. But what I'm really hoping for is that we're a little bit more aggressive than $488,000 moving forward, because next year, I believe if my numbers, if I wrote them right, we'd be down 1.1 million next year. And we're still falling behind. And I think you guys remember, I'm not going to go over, but you remember what I want to do. I want to, I want to be a lot more aggressive, at least start hitting it even this year. I think we need to have another budget conversation. I'm not sure we have finished everything. Seen a couple nods. And just have another open conversation as to how we want to go about this. There's some things on the table. Be really nice to, to actually make some decisions, all right? That's all I got. Anybody else? We'll make sure that gets on an agenda before December. I know that's not a lot of time. Did you have something?
Yeah, public comment?
Yeah, I'm getting to it.
Okay.
So at this time, I'd like to open the, it's not really a public hearing, is it? But anybody wishing to speak? Anybody wishing to give comment on the budget process? Yeah, please.
So my name's Bonnie Bolash. I live just right around the, around the block. My question is, is, because you know, there's been talk about recession for like a long time, and there's all these different economic indicators of recession. And in 2007, when the bubble busted, it really impacted real estate. And now we're seeing this huge rise in interest rates with mortgages and things like that. And I was just wondering, have you guys seen an increase in like people not being able to afford housing and things like that? And that's, and obviously that plays a role in the budget, right? If people are unhomed in our community. And so that's what my question was. That's all.
That's, that's interesting, you got a number of questions.
Foreclosures, right?
Yeah, like, like increase, you know, because obviously like the affordability, like, you know, like, I couldn't afford my home right now. Like if I had to actually look for a home in our community, I couldn't afford the house that I currently live in based on the interest rate and the, the prices that are currently available in the current housing stock. And so like to me, I'm like, gosh, there's this huge economic indicators again that we're seeing that, you know, there's some areas of industries that are in trouble. And when, when you see those economic indicators that really, you know, like, we're seeing lots of businesses closing that are corporate. And like, are we starting to see a recession? I mean, they've been talking about recession for three years and, and people are saying, no, it's not going to happen. But, you know, people are people, and being unhomed because you can't afford your home is, is, is significant because it's a personal thing. And so I was just curious if you guys have seen that through any economic indicators through the city's own information.
Okay, so I'm going to go to John, I think you'd probably be the closest one.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Those are great, great points and questions. I think the difference between, a lot of differences between the current situation in 2006, 2007. The single biggest one is to the extent that there is a potential for a more, a property crash, it's on the commercial real estate side, especially office, not even retail so much. Retail is sort of stabilized, and in Crystal, despite what you might think, our vacancy rate is actually very competitive with other cities. It's around 5% for retail space. That is an amazingly low vacancy rate by any standard. On the residential side, the number of foreclosures this year is still in single digits. I don't remember the exact number. I don't know if we'll get to double digits this year, but if you consider that in 2008, we had 160 foreclosures of single-family homes. I mean, we're in a very different world right now, and I, I, I can't say I see any leading indicators of that. I think one bit of good news for long-term affordability, and unfortunately for property taxpayers, this won't show up until the property taxes that you hear about next year for payable 2025, is that over the last 12 months or so, commercial, or excuse me, residential real estate values in Crystal have sort of leveled off, and that's almost entirely due to the interest rates going up. But what that means, it means that the shift of the tax burden away from commercial and industrial property towards residential, that may be finally ending, and it may stabilize or maybe move back in the other direction. We won't really know for another year, but we are seeing leading indicators of that. And as far, again, as far as retail, you know, things happen more slowly in Crystal, but I mean, we, we are, at the EDA meeting, I mentioned New Horizon is converting an old kind of out-of-date office building into a daycare center, state of the art. So there is investment happening in Crystal. And I, if I had a city full of office buildings, I'd be a lot more concerned.
Yeah, thank you. I don't know that I could have given that Crystal perspective. Mine would have been more anecdotal in terms of what I'm hearing. I would say, I'd like to speak a little bit on that. I'm hearing just from different people that, that I listen to, economists and whatnot, that it's not over, there might be another wave. Don't know. I don't have that skill set. But I'm, I'm hearing that there's, there's still a lot of people walking away from unbelievable leases that are just, just huge in nature. And a lot of those leases still haven't come due, so they're not, they're not seeing, you know, the interest rate step up. It's, it's kind of like, it's kind of like our national debt. If we have, if we have short-term national debt at a low interest rate, it's going to convert to a higher rate faster than if we have more long-term. Well, that's kind of where we're sitting from a national perspective. We haven't felt the full effects as a nation, or I think as commercial property, to, to really have felt the effects. That's the way my belief is, even though we have seen kind of a plateau here in Crystal. I really believe that we haven't seen those leases turn over quite yet. I, I hope that helps. We've been talking about some of these greater economic impacts at some level for at least three years. And, and I think, I think your points about the housing, not being able to afford your house if you had to buy it today, I think most people are there. I would, I would, I would think most people are in that space. So it's, it's a tough thing to, to kind of try to navigate if you're, if you're looking for housing at this time. So we do have affordability in this community, but when the stock's so, so low and the interest rate's so high, it doesn't make it easy. Any other comments? John?
I, I still see homes for sale in Crystal, and also the interest rate, even though it's seven and a half percent. I remember I bought my first house for seven and a half percent, so it's not like too far out of, you know, out of scope. But definitely it sounds like the Fed is starting to level off on, on terms of interest rate hikes. I do have a friend of mine who is a real estate agent, and he said that there is still a lot of interest in home buying, and he said mostly it's driven by younger couples, which is pretty impressive, so. But I think overall, I think the, the thing with the bubble last time, that there was a lot of inconsistencies in terms of mortgage applications, there was a lot of, just, you know, they were completing those, those mortgage, mortgages as quickly as possible. People were getting into homes that they couldn't afford or had any idea how to afford. They were getting in on.
No knocks.
Yeah, no, yeah, exactly. They were on these interest, interest-only type mortgages. They thought they'd only hold the house for five years and sell it, and the next thing you know, they were completely underwater and had no cash. So that contributed to a lot of the problems that we existed here, that we had here in Crystal. I think we had, at that time, over 500 foreclosures within our city alone. So it was, it was kind of a pretty scary time for us in terms of, you know, local government. But I think with improved regulation in terms of mortgaging, the city is in a better place. I think people are, have a better understanding of what it takes to afford a home. And likewise, you know, I mean, I think of, you know, when I first got my house and going through '08, I'm really glad that I did not walk away from my home because, you know, like anything, if, you know, if you persist and are willing to, you know, fight through some of the rough spots in life, you know, eventually you get to the other side and you're much better off. Thank you.
Yeah, I, you know, I remember interest rates at 12%. But the price of houses was so much less. So, so the affordability is, it's, it's hard, it's not necessarily apples to apples. When you put the two together with the high price and the higher interest rate, that's where the bite comes in. So, yeah, cool, thank you. Anybody else? All right. I think we're done with this issue. Thank you. Appreciate it, Jody. All right, we got a couple announcements. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. The Crystal Police Building will be displaying purple lighting from October 1st to the 31st in support of domestic violence awareness. The City of Crystal strongly encourages everyone to break the silence on domestic violence and view the purple lights in October as an encouraging message to help, hope, and heal. In healing. If you or someone you know has been a victim of domestic violence, call 911. Additional resources are available through the Crystal Police Department. And Tubman is available, and you can get their phone number there. Herself Health has an open house. It is Thursday, October 5th, as from 1:00 to 3:00 o'clock. I think the ribbon cutting is scheduled for 1:30. And that's in the former Crystal Vision Clinic. Police Dry City Community Engagement Forum is Wednesday, October 11th, from 6:30 to 8:00, and that's going to be at our community center. Included is New Hope in Robbinsdale, along with Crystal. The City of Crystal Work Sessions scheduled for October 12th. We have canceled that meeting, so please do not come for that meeting. The next city council meeting is Tuesday, October 7, 17th, at 7:00 PM here at, here at City Hall. That's available. You can attend through Zoom as well. City council meetings and work sessions are open to the public, and previous meetings are available for viewing and listening at crystalmn.gov. And any other announcements? I got one. In the ultimate frisbee news, Dragon Thrust will be going to Nationals in San Diego with three Armstrong alumnis. That's pretty cool.
Wow, is that one of them Marty?
One of them is Marty.
Congratulations.
Yeah, so they're going to San Diego for Nationals. They had, they run three tournaments a year, national tournaments. First, the US Open was in Colorado. They got creamed. They lost by 1.5 games. And then the next national tournament, they took the tournament. So they went, they came in as seeded number 16th in the nation, or in the tournament, and then won it, something kind of unusual. But, so they'll be going to, going there for, probably first seed, I would imagine, but we'll see. We have, let's see. There are two, two men and one, one woman that is on that team going to Nationals. They're all from Armstrong, so that's exciting.
Very cool.
It's fun to, it's fun when you have a, a child involved in it because when we went to the YMCA, Therese, I'm looking at you.
Yeah.
Our kids were in there.
Yeah.
Two of them were in kids care together, and they'd have no recollection of each other.
My, my children?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay. Over there.
Marty and the other gentleman. So it's just kind of interesting to see that come around. All right. If nobody's got anything else, John?
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Thanks, Therese. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Motion carries.